You got it started.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd like to call the order, the what day is it, January 6th, 2021? First school committee meeting of the year, the meeting that Cohasset Public Schools School Committee meeting, would all members please indicate so in roll call, Mrs. Colery?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. Seanon?
Present.
Present, Craig McClellan, all members are present, start of the meeting. As I remark in the beginning of every meeting, this meeting is otherwise in-person public meetings being held virtually due to the pandemic and Governor Baker's declaration of emergency in this Commonwealth. The meeting, as Dr. Sullivan just stated, is being streamed live on Facebook as well as Cohasset 143 TV. At this time, I'd move to public comment, which is a section reserved for discussion or comment not related to to items that are already on the agenda. If any members of the public have any comments that they'd like to share or topics of discussion that they'd like to raise with the committee, please do so. I'll give them a second to chime in on the Q and A feature here.
The Q and A feature is functioning properly, you'll be happy to know, Chairman McClellan.
That's great. Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on to the next agenda item with which is the superintendent's report. Turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much, Craig, and like to say Happy New Year to start off to everyone. You know, it was the new year always starts with a bright promise and, you know, I think that we learned a lot about our ability to persevere this year, if nothing else. And I do do think that, you know, 2021 promises to be a much better year. I feel like, you know, we've learned a lot about how to get through tough things together. And I look forward to taking those lessons and continuing to to move forward for the students. We obviously have some traumatic events happening now as we're actually doing this webinar. So I thought it might be an appropriate measure just to share what I will share in my newsletter regarding some tips from the National Association of School Psychologists about talking to children about violence. And as you can see on the screen, these are very common sense tips. But often when we do traumatic events or anything happening in the news that that younger kids particularly may have question about, it's good to have some guiding thoughts about making sure that they feel safe and secure. So what they recommend here, and this is talking to children about violence or anything that might be happening in the in the world that could be traumatic, to reaffirm safety, really make that time to talk, to keep expectations developmentally appropriate, developmentally appropriate. And as you can see, in early elementary, really provide simple information balanced by assurances of safety. Upper elementary and early middle, answer questions and assistance separating reality from fantasy. And then upper middle and high school really emphasizing the student role in safety and how to access support. And then at schools, you know, whenever there are things that could lead to unrest, we always have a role in making sure that students feel safe. And part of that is making sure that we keep a normal routine. And we found that in any any event that could, you know, cause any type of traumatic reaction for a student or or any unrest, it's good to have a feeling of safety in a normal routine. So I thought I'd just take the opportunity because it's really fresh and happening right now. And there might be some families watching, just to remember that often during these traumatic times, keeping it simple and reassuring students about safety at a developmentally appropriate level is always a good play and a good way to go about it. So just wanted to share that. And I thought I'd transition from that to some really happy news. And we all could use good news in in these difficult times. And one of the great things about working in schools is that I'm surrounded by students and staff members who are always looking to help others and always looking to send messages that will support and provide inspiration when needed for for those who need it and for those who are doing an amazing job in trying to provide safety during this difficult time. So while I have Principal Mills here, I thought I'd let him share just some good news that happened. Really coming out of the the positive efforts of our students and staff at the middle school and their collaboration with a community member who works at Massachusetts General Hospital. So and as you're doing that, Principal Mills, I'll I'll share some of the images that they sent over.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this was a nice opportunity that came out, came up in early December when one of our parents, who's a nurse at the Neurosciences Care Unit at Mass General, reached out to say, you know, that it would be wonderful if if we had any children that would be interested in creating any sort of decorations for the holidays and for the patients just to dress up their unit. I reached out to Mrs. Cynthia Gordon, who's our student council advisor, and Mrs. Laura Schwartz, who's our art teacher, and shared the parent's email and the request. And they immediately jumped right on it. Mrs. Schwartz talked to her art students about creating positive messaging. You know, they explained to the kids where it would be going, so a lot of the messages were positive and get well and things like that. And those are done in art classes, or oftentimes just with, as students were remote, they worked on it on their own and then brought it in. Mrs. Gordon with the Student Council sponsored an after-school holiday decoration workshop where we provided the supplies and we had a lot of students come in after school. And, you know, we socially distanced, we spread the workshops out over a couple of classrooms. And Mrs. Gordon and the Student Council created these these really neat three-dimensional stars that I we're going to see in one of the pictures. But the both faculty members combined all the student work. And I think we ended up sending three boxes to the hospital that that really did a nice job of providing color and warmth to that little corner of Mass General. And it's a corner where people, you know, go for any sort of brain or head injury. So it was, and then in talking to the parent, it sounded like the, you know, it was really well received. And her colleagues, as well as patients and their family, were really thankful to to our faculty and especially to our students. So we're happy to do it and we're nice, you know, happy to have the opportunity to make a difference. And like the kids and faculty, as always, were fantastic.
It just thought it was so heartwarming and nice to see the efforts of our students in this in this very important medical unit. So it's a good lesson for our kids. I think it provided some positivity for the folks at Mass General Hospital. I love the collaboration that it was a community member. And it's just so indicative of the special things that happen every day here in Cohasset Public Schools that sometimes go unnoticed or unspoken about. So thank you to your to Mrs. Gordon, to Mrs. Schwartz, to all the middle school students and obviously to the folks at Massachusetts General Hospital who do such great work every day. So just wanted to start with that, that it was a good, it's, you know, we don't get enough good news nowadays. So it's good to see that and and the efforts that were put into place. So thank you for sharing that that story, Principal Mills. And just as by way of a few updates, and then we'll kind of get into the the meat of the of the meeting. But obviously, we're we're in the midst of a surge in COVID. We have had some of our neighboring school communities and towns make the decision to move to a full remote scenario. I just want everyone to know that we're looking at things very closely. What we're tracking, obviously, our community numbers are up, we are in the red. That's an important factor. We're also looking at cases in our schools, transmission in our schools. And we're looking at our quarantine numbers. And that could be quarantining of students or staff for various reasons, either being in close contact or having having traveled. And at this point, or, you know, we're probably shifting somewhat out of that. But having the travel protocols put in place for for out-of-state travel. And we're really making sure that all of those factors are considered in everything we do moving forward. Right now, we are not at the point where we have an extravagant amount of quarantines district-wide. And as you know, I've been keeping people in tune with the cases for our community members. As they have happened, we've had a little uptick. And clearly, the community numbers are not at a place where we want them to be. And we're really watching that. But right now, we're still at a place where we feel we can function safely. But we're looking and watching and certainly ready to move if there are scenarios that come up that make us have to deviate from our course of action right now. But I will continue to update the community every Thursday where we are as a as a community, as a town, as a school community. You know, as you've seen in my communications, it's an ongoing process of making sure you know where things are happening. We're very much looking if there is any transmission in the schools. And so far, there hasn't been, we're watching that, though, and we're ready to react. And I just want to put a a quick word of praise out to our nurses and our school nurses and our nurse leader, Kelly Gildeck, and also our town nurse and health agents, particularly Mary Goodwin, our town nurse, who is an absolute treasure here in Cohasset, we're so lucky to have her. And the relationship that Mary had built up with our nurses over many years of being here in Cohasset is really paying off. I think our communication between our health department and our schools and the community members that may be affected by COVID has been very hot, very well done. And I'm I'm very thankful that I'm working in Cohasset because of that, because I think it puts us in a very safe situation in a difficult scenario for sure. So I just wanted to to start with that. Another update regarding kindergarten, our kindergarten registration is now open. And it is available, all the information is available on our website. It will be open through January 29th. For the school committee knowledge, we already have, I think, 47 of 48 students signed up for for kindergarten next year. Monday, the 11th, Principal Farrell will be doing a virtual sort of frequently asked questions and the opportunity for people to who are maybe having their child go into kindergarten, ask questions about the program. And yeah, so I don't know if the committee has any questions about those updates or thoughts. If not, I will move on to hear from Caroline. Any questions or thoughts, Chairman McClellan?
Any?
I would just like to reiterate your thanks to the public health officials in town. I believe today may be Mary Goodwin's birthday, and I would like to wish her a birthday and her for all of her hard work.
Well, I think I'll text her tomorrow because every time I text Mary, I think she probably gets nervous that something's going on.
Do that.
I'll get her tomorrow, but um, yeah, she's she's amazing and happy birthday, Mary, if you happen to be out there. Great, anything else, Craig? All right, so move over to Caroline then. Caroline, Happy New Year, welcome back. And as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we have increased now our student advisory council to include middle school students this year. We are three middle school students. And the Principal Mills, if you want to announce who they are?
Yep, I'm happy to announce representing CMS is Ella Lynch, Nathan Ashar, and Grace Honesty. Who are just all wonderful kids, they're eighth graders. Hopefully, they'll continue on and represent the high school on the council next year and in the future.
That's great, and they're going to be joining us in our February meeting. And our next meeting, we'll be looking at, which will be Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, we'll be looking at our data regarding the survey. So Caroline, I'll turn it over to you. I know we haven't been back all but, you know, three days, but any update you want to provide would be very welcomed. So Caroline.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think I'm intrigued and excited to look at the data that we collected. And we put a lot of thought into the questions that we wanted to ask our students and what we would think would be the most beneficial to hear back from them and to help making more informed decisions. And additionally, so since this year, the it didn't really make sense to have a big ceremony that usually would happen for the National Honor Society and students who get inducted and which is a big accomplishment, not only for academic, but for leadership and in like the school and the community. So Mr. Sasso and Mr. Turner and a bunch of the students were working on now to put together like a video compilation that's going to highlight all of the kids so they will get their moment that will be sent out to families. And so that I think will be a good way, so that's in progress. So I'm excited to see when that comes out. Definitely now, we're kind of like, as you were saying, kind of in a surge of COVID a little bit. Just we, I think, like, to kind of help the students as much as teachers. Like, I remember I had a nice conversation with one of my teachers like a while ago just about how we want to, it's going to happen if students get called down and removed for contact tracing reasons and stuff like that, that it's not like a shameful or negative experience just at all. Like, it's going to happen. And just like reiterating that it's nothing to like be ashamed of or anything like that, like just to make as long as like, because you don't really want students like speculating and rumors about like if someone has it, it's not something like that at all. So I think for the most part, students get that, but just as kind of like a second reiteration across for everyone. And exciting, like some, obviously, our winter sports have been happening for a while. Like, I play basketball and I'm excited, we have our first game, which is on Friday. And I know it's hard with like other sports who like commute, like swimming, hockey, are going to outside facilities. And it kind of just brings a lot, so just making sure that we all are taking the rules that the MIAA is provided with us responsibly, that it is a gift that we get to do these things. And like, I just enjoy running around with my friends. And it's definitely something that we all need to keep taking seriously if we want it to continue. And I know Jake had kind of mentioned last time in the student meeting we had about getting like the theater and the play, kind of something to unfold. I know Miss Moriarty, I'm sure she's been hard at work in all the music department, art department, thinking of different ways, because those are equally important for students just as much as any sports. So working to, again, create creative ways for that to happen positively in the new year. That's pretty much all I have to say. I know I'm first day back tomorrow in person because I'm a cohort B, but that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. And I should say, you know, we realized that Cohort B did miss some days in the latest snowstorm. So I know that, you know, we obviously have a winter ahead of us, but we are aware of, you know, we want to make sure we keep it as even as possible and we can make adjustments with plenty of notice going forward. Yeah, if, you know, when it's available. But we are happy to see the Cohort B students back tomorrow, that's for sure. Any questions for Caroline?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to wish you luck in your game on Friday.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you, Caroline. Caroline, you're welcome to stay around a bit for the next part of the presentation. If you like, you're doing the inclusive cultures, might be good for you to stay. And then, you know, certainly after that, feel free to to leave. I know you you're busy and you got to get ready for your first day of school in a while in person tomorrow. So thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
So I'll transition over now to, if I can, Greg, to the next agenda item. Wonderful. So we've had the pleasure, and I think really it's it's worked to our benefit to have the Institutional Climate Inclusion Assessment, which isn't doesn't exactly roll off the tongue, but it's a wonderful measure of what kind of culture we're providing. And I love, and I have to give Principal Scott a lot of kudos for really bringing this to Cohasset and Principal Mills for for jumping on board with this, because I think it's a very meaningful tool in really determining how we're going about making a environment as inclusive as possible. And if there are shortcomings that come from it, I really appreciate the openness of the staff and of our two leaders here to to really look at those measures and create action plans around it to make our school and community a more inclusive place, to make sure that we're filling in any gaps that might result by being an underrepresented population, whatever it might be, in our school community. So with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Principal Scott is going to start the presentation. And then Principal Mills will look at the data specifically as it relates to the middle school. And then I don't know, Chairman McClellan, if you'd like to have questions after the high school part and then after the middle school part, or just after both presentations? And he may have jumped off for a second.
No, I'm here, I'm just trying to, just trying to serve my son some some dinner while this is going on. I apologize. I'm having a tough day. But you were asking about the procedure, how we do this. I think that I know what you asked, and I would say just go through it. And then we can ask questions at the end.
I think that's probably a good way to go about it. But I will turn it over now, and I believe, Principal Scott, you have the power to present. And there you go, so take it away. Brian, I think, I think you're muted, maybe.
I am, all right, this will be better, it's more effective.
Go ahead, Brian.
So I will kind of give a general overview. I'll go through the high school specific stuff, and then I'll turn it over to Principal Mills for the the middle school stuff after that. And, you know, the Institutional Climate Inclusion Assessment doesn't roll off the tongue. And I've pronounced the acronym much as ICIA, but in talking with the woman who created it, she pronounces it ISEA, which I kind of like, because it reminds me of ICU. So that might roll off the tongue a little bit, a little bit easier.
That's better.
We'll see if we can stick with that. Okay, so what is it? Every two years, we conduct a survey called the Institutional Climate Inclusion Assessment. And this alternates with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Both overlap, and while the Youth Risk Behavior Survey measures mostly risky behaviors of students, substance abuse, violence, general safety, the ISEA survey comes at the student wellness from a different angle, namely whether students feel like they belong in the community that we've created. In other words, while the IRYRBS measures student behaviors, ISEA tries to get at the root of those behaviors by understanding what the student perception of the school climate is, particularly as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, you know, what are the student experiences of the campus, of the classroom environment, of the school policies, of their classmates? And understanding these perceptions better prepares us to create an environment rich in protective factors, which can both prevent risky behaviors, but more importantly, you know, just create an environment that promotes student wellness and and success. Some of the questions that it hopes to answer are around, you know, whether students feel safe, whether they feel seen and cared for, whether they are respected by their teachers and their peers and the administration, and whether they generally feel included in Cohasset. We're fortunate that students in Cohasset takes, you know, surveys seriously. We try not to inundate them with surveys, and we've always had very good participation. And so these slides will just show a little bit of the general breakdown of student demographics across both the middle and high schools combined. And, you know, I think you can generally see that we have a pretty good number of students, about 700 students in total. It breaks down about how you would picture it breaking down, 88% white, about 22% disability versus 78% who report no disability. Most are in the religious majority. About 9% relate as LGBTQ plus. And then about 5% report as international students versus domestic. A few things are important to note, and the reason that we are taking the follow-up steps that we are are related to this is that this is a survey that measures perception, and there are a lot of factors that that influence what we're looking at. So it's important to recognize that while we're looking for and want to capture actual student experiences, those experiences need to be unpacked, because personal experience is influenced by all kinds of other factors. What's going on at school at the time, what's happening in a student's personal life, what do students think is going on in a school? And often, you know, you can't be forthcoming with all of the actual information. So the rumor mill generates a lot of misinformation. And and what is happening nationally, you know, the national climate tonight is going to influence the school day tomorrow. So it all changes over time, and even our perception in the moment isn't always our perception after we're allowed some time to reflect on it. So it's a moment in time, we intentionally give this in February when it's a struggle for everyone. If we gave it in September or June, we'd get much different results. We give it despite what's going on in the school, because often what's happening, good or bad, can be a vehicle for student voice, where otherwise, if it wasn't at the forefront, they might not think to mention it. So I see all of that as a good thing. And I do think, and again, I say, tonight is a good illustration, that the larger societal forces do make a difference. You know, in talking with our consultant, behaviors in schools over the last several years have mimicked kind of the national discord and the lack of discourse and demeanor. And, you know, the the increase in social media exacerbates that. And I don't say that as an excuse, you know, some of the trends here are not good, and I will make no apologies for that. But they're not good despite working towards them, which I think points to the enormity of the problem and the the need for a strong collective response. So a few general findings, and, you know, we tended to gravitate towards the negative, but I'll stop by saying that there's a lot of positives that were shown in this report. Unsurprisingly, you know, the overwhelming majority of students care about their education, and I would put 96% up against any school in the world. You know, that underlying motivation is a real strength when looking at culture. Students also report higher levels of physical safety since the last report and lower levels of drug and alcohol use, which I believe 100% correlates both to the work that our Safe Schools Committee did and to how well the Safe Harbor Coalition has created a partnership, not just with the schools, but with the larger community in a way that it's it's a true partnership. Everyone has a role, but we aren't stepping on everybody else's toes, we're not doing anybody else's job. We're all kind of functioning in in relative harmony. And overwhelmingly, you know, students report that they like their teachers and they feel that they're cared for and respected. And so those are all important contextual points. Students also report that they have friends, that they're involved in sports and clubs, and that they generally feel that the physical space in the classrooms is a comfortable environment. Comparative to the first report, overall, there's been a general steadiness in the way that students feel that they've been judged. And you can read that in a couple of ways, depending on your perspective. You could read that as a lack of progress, or, you know, in light of kind of the national trends, maybe there is more progress than the statistics show. But in any event, this is all information that requires some further unpacking. So I'll get right into the high school major findings, and the report is thick, it's 200 or 300 pages long. But the major findings at the high school really revolve around seven groups that either feel excluded outright or marginalized. And each group indicates different ways in which they experience the culture of Cohasset. So students of color, for example, rarely report, and this shouldn't be shocking, that they've had a teacher that looks like they do. Right, students report of these groups report less involvement in co-curricular activities and sports. They report feeling negatively judged because of their identity, thought to be less capable by the adults, treated unfairly by the administration, and in the classroom, they feel like they don't belong and that they need to change who they are in order to come to school. In some cases, students report feeling less safe, either physically or emotionally or both. And there are some large discrepancies here, sometimes a 45% difference. And because in, as a percent of the total, these groups make up a relatively small percentage, their stories and their perceptions often get drowned out in the larger narrative. So for example, if 75% of LBGTQ students report feeling out of place as opposed to 30% of the overall population, that's a huge difference that we need to focus on. Two other general trends that students report, they report liking school less. Now, this was given in February before the pandemic, so this isn't related to that. And among these groups, particularly sharp declines were reported. In fairness, this is a little bit hard to norm, it's tough to know whether 68% or 62% is In fairness, this is a little bit hard to norm. It's tough to know whether sixty-eight percent or sixty-two percent is average or, you know, it, for what type of school and in what area, but you know, for me, I think the overall takeaway is that sixty percent isn't good enough for this school, uh, independent of what anybody else is going on. Uh, and so that really needs to be the focus. So what are we gonna do? Uh, we've begun addressing s- some of the issues simultaneously, and what we really want to do is unpack the data. We have a lot of numbers, but we don't have stories. And you know, so when you look at that as a teacher or as administrator, you say, alright, that's a jarring figure, but why? What does that mean? What, what is going into that student's answer? And so we'll, we're simultaneously beginning some trainings on cultural respons- responsiveness as a staff. But more importantly, we've contracted with an outside organization to conduct a series of focus groups. And the reason that we went with an outside organization is that I don't want my own perceptions to color the results. You know, it's easy enough to say that, you know, for every decision that I make, one person thinks it's reasonable, the other person thinks it's outrageous, so you know, of course, forty percent of the students think that the administration is, is a, you know, unfair. I don't want to fall into that trap, and I don't know that the students would be forthright telling me. If I'm doing something that's created a negative experience for, for students, I promise you it is not intentional. And so I want to hear from somebody else, you know, if I'm doing X, how is that action being received? And how can I adapt it? Because if it is happening, I, I guarantee it's not on purpose and it, it's unconscious. So to date, our consultant um began in December with so, a selected number of faculty and community members, most of whom directly have contact, direct interaction with these subgroups mentioned, either through clubs or different organizations. And that was about twenty members. All of the members in all of the focus groups were, are reported out anonymously. While that was going on, we created student affinity groups. So we put out to students, volunteers, um, for any student who, who found themselves in that category and wanted a voice without other voices kind of crowding that conversation. And we got twenty-eight students, which was good. Um, they volunteered their experiences. Our consultant sent out a, a calendar today, so those conversations are going to be happening in January. Those are the two groups, the first two that are going to start to unpack the data. They're going to provide the stories. They're going to allow us and allow me, allow our faculty to really see how they are experiencing our administration, our classrooms, our physical plant, you know, what are they hearing, what are they seeing? Because, you know, oftentimes in any kind of relationship anywhere, what someone says and what someone hears are often very different. And so really trying to, to bridge an understanding between what those two are is important. So those are going on right now. After this, we're going to share our survey results, these survey results with the faculty, so that they can start to consider the data in light of the trainings. We're not going to give this to them and then start a conversation to say, alright, how are we going to fix it? Um, because it doesn't, it lacks a student voice. You know, it's one thing to look at the data. We want to wait until these focus groups are done so that we have these stories. We'll have a larger conversation after that, but while this is happening, while we are sharing this with the faculty, we're also creating parent folk, focus groups, so the parents can share their perceptions of the environment. And right now, it's only been a couple of days since I sent out the invitation. We have at least fifteen parents, which is, I think, really good. We'll open that until the end of January. Um, we can never have too many volunteers, so anybody who has something to say, please say it. Um, and this does not have to be associated with any of the particular affinity groups. It's anyone in the community that, that wants a voice. These conversations are going to happen in February. And then following that, we're going to have three student body focus groups, groups that, that make up the actual um student body, so kids from Student Council, from our athletics, from um National Honor Society, you know, from the general student body will, will have a voice there. All of this work should provide the foundation for us to create a solid plan, at least begin a very good conversation about what is it that are challenging us? And then, once we kind of draft what that plan is, we can embed that into our school improvement plan. That can inform our strategic plan at the district level. It can become a much larger conversation, and hopefully, because we've started the conversation, we provided a vehicle for people to talk, which I think is the big, the biggest challenge we've had so far. Uh, and even in trying to get and solicit some of these student voices for the focus groups, people are very reluctant to have the conversation. It's just not a safe place. So I think, you know, taking the, the relatively slow road and creating this space and, and letting people know that this is stuff that we want to talk about, we want people to share their stories. It isn't going to be, you know, frowned upon. We, we, we're going to try to change uh, and we want to hear where we're falling down along the way. I think, um, you know, that'll be a, a very good place for us to end up in. So, you know, the, the long-term goal for the high school for this year is to end up with a plan that can be, you know, reflected in the strategic plan and then carried out over the next however many years, obviously, adapted as it goes. So that is the high school side.
Alright, uh, thanks, Brian. The um, the middle school data, before I uh sort of jump in where uh Principal Scott leaves off, kind of had a slightly different uh path uh to getting the data. When the assessment was given, it was given six through twelve uh last year. Uh, it got reported to us this fall is as six through twelve, like as if it were one institution. I ended up working with a consultant and getting the raw data, so we, you know, we weren't able to focus on six through twelve for every single subgroup. Um, and we only really got most of that data in December, so we're in a slightly different place, but I, I'm, I really feel good about the fact that we have uh data that pertains just to our students. So uh, you know, I think uh what Brian had done, I think it makes sense to sort of start with an overview, general findings. Um, you, you know, the majority of our kids uh think education is important and they also like their school. I do also want to point out at this point that this um, because the, we're focusing on the six through eight data, there's not a trend or a pattern line or a benchmark that I could, I could refer to. Uh, we don't have data for the two thousand seventeen uh ICIA just for six through eight because it was never disaggregated. So these are just sort of, you know, data points out in the thin air. Um, as close as we could get to making relative uh conclusions on them was an interview with a consultant um who said, based in her experiences with public middle schools, that we had a tremendous amount to be really proud of and, and numbers like uh sixty-seven percent report on a survey they like their kid, uh, they, their school was extremely positive. So um, without having those benchmarks, you know, some of the more positive things, you know, is that ninety, you know, over ninety percent of our kids feel safe. That they two, almost two-thirds report that our, their school community feels like it's caring. Um, when it comes to their relationship with teachers, they see our teachers as caring about them. Uh, they like their teachers, uh, they feel like their teachers treat them respectfully and that there, there is at least one teacher or, or sometimes staff member who knows them pretty well. And, and um, that last one I know from working in other districts, seventy-four percent is uh, you know, you know, a good twenty, twenty-five percent higher than I've seen at other schools. So I feel like the data, uh, some of the data is really positive and, and anecdotally, what I see every day kind of supports that. So whenever I look at data, I always look for, you know, what surprises me? Like, what did I expect to see? What's a nice surprise and what's maybe concerning? And I, I, you know, found these data points to be um, to be nice surprises. Uh, as far as other general findings, um, you know, peer interactions, uh, over ninety percent of the, the kids report that they do have close friendships and that, and they do feel physically and emotionally safer around other students. Uh, things like that are really important because they're often called uh protective uh factors uh which are important for social and emotional health, the fact that they do have those positive relationships and they feel safe. So once again, it's, it's a really positive um piece of data about our um, our school and our culture. Inclusion, uh, I was really happy to see, you know, over four-fifths of the kids feel that um appreciating ethnic and racial diversity is really important at their school and that um they agree, uh, you know, three out of four kids agree that it's important to be aware of one's own bias. So obviously, when it comes to issues of inclusivity and other cultures and diversity, kids' hearts are in the right place. I don't know, that was kind of a weird animation. Yeah, there we go. However, um, you, you know, the, the purpose, the, the goal, like Brian said, of the survey is to really to see how different subgroups are feeling within the culture of a building and whether or not it feels uh like an inclusive culture. Um, the, our, our analysis of the data, we were able to focus on racial minorities like African-American, black students and historically underrepresented students uh defined as Latinx or Hispanic students, uh, as well as LGBTQ plus students and students with disabilities. It's important to note that students with disabilities are students um at the beginning or in a demographic section of the survey, students self-reported as students with disabilities. So for instance, when I looked at the size of that sample, it was higher than students, the number of our students on IAPs and what we might have had as students who might be on a five oh four also reported within that group. So um, it, it just, uh, something I found interesting. Alright, so uh, the survey reports out on nine different dimensions of school culture. One of them is general campus and climate. Our general campus climate, what we got here, uh, you know, the things that really jumped out, the surprises that were concerning to me were um differences between the subgroups and, and the average CMS student. So when it came to, for instance, report on uh whether or not they like their school, there were substantial differences between sort of the average student and LGBTQ plus African-American and historically underrepresented students. Uh, asked whether or not it feels like a caring community, students with disabilities and LGBTQ. Uh, students uh also reported a difference and um when it came to the, some of the less supervised, less structured parts of a school day, cafeteria, the use of locker rooms, the bathroom, subgroup, some subgroups also reported that, uh, you know, compared to the average student, they felt less safe in those places. Uh, it is worth pointing out this year because of COVID, you know, the cafeteria is, is run different. Our students are socially distanced. They, they still are around some friends they got to choose, but what you don't have are long tables with large sort of groups uh pressed together and um the op- the opportunity for maybe two or three close friends to go sit somewhere else isn't quite there. So our caf is a little different. We're not using our locker rooms and to socially distance, uh, our bathrooms are one person at, at a time. So Brian, you know, as Brian pointed out, that depending on the timing of the survey, it's, you know, if this were given this year, for instance, uh, there would be none of this data. So I'm kind of thankful to get it because in a normal year, those sound like areas where uh, you know, uh, students may feel uh uncomfortable. Uh, the last general climate um uh piece that jumped out was LGBTQ students and Asian students more likely to report feeling stressed. I think it's important to, to stop here too, and, and as you look at uh data, make sure we, uh, we, we don't use the word because. Oh yeah, that, you know, when they look at a data point like that, or that's because of this, that, the other. You, you might say, well, I'm kind of surprised by that or I'm concerned by that. I, I really have, uh, rec- you know, encourage people not to use the word because as we look at this because, for instance, that last bullet really requires us to dig a little further and ask, well, what, you know, what's causing stress? What is it about school that's stressful? So, uh, the, so the, one of the nine dimensions, peer interactions. Uh, same thing, although generally our students reported really positive peer interactions. Members of some of the subgroups report that uh, that our students don't treat each other respectfully and that LGBTQ students, for instance, feel less likely to, uh, compare to the average student to feel physically and emotionally safe. So around peer interactions, there are issues. Inclusivity, once again, our kids reported, if, if you think back to that general finding slide, our kids reported that, that uh being aware of their own bias and, and embracing diversity are both important issues. Uh, when members of subgroups are asked, does it feel like as a school uh we value uh diversity, whether racial, cultural, gender? A, a number of subgroups, African-American, historically underrepresented LGBTQ, uh, say it doesn't feel like students do. Uh, smaller group teachers, and then lastly administrators. Uh, and then um uh, some of the subgroups also reported uh not being satisfied with the school's efforts to support diversity, because once again, everybody said that they feel like it's important, but then there are some groups who report that it just doesn't feel like we're doing uh, a good enough job. I'll paraphrase, um, uh, you know, that statement. So, so next steps, like what, you know, what can we do as a school? Um, I think, you know, to, to Brian's point too, the, the conversation that um, this engenders, I think, is, is one of the critical pieces. Um, in the discussions, uh, you know, sometimes quote unquote solutions pop up, but when we're talking about cultural change, uh, that just takes time. So, and you can click again, Brian. It's important for us as a faculty and as a community to consider things that work really well and areas to be concerned about, and then really look to explore more deeply, what is the data saying? And those are conversations that, for instance, we start with the faculty tomorrow, faculty and staff at a faculty meeting, and then I look forward to this, you know, having uh conversations with parents in the community as well as students, as we sort of explore, uh, what's this data saying to us? I think it's important for us to gen- uh, identify resources that we can use uh to help uh, you know, address some of these concerns, whether it's our, you know, an excellent school counseling staff. Uh, I'd like to see us work together within the school uh to create a, a you know, faculty administration diversity committee where we can talk, uh, sort of explore the data a little bit further and then talk about uh the, you know, concrete steps that could be taken. Uh, and then, you know, something that would work over, you know, multiple years. The district's been great as far as planning professional development. We began the year off with uh cultural inclusivity uh work and we revisit that again in March. And then uh, I think it's important to look at things like, you know, outside organizations. Desi's got a lot of uh curriculum materials and, and support materials around inclusivity uh as well as Safe Harbor, because uh they've been a great partner of ours when it comes to supporting uh, you know, protective factors among our students and student relationships. Um, so those, you know, those different places are important resources that would be able to help uh us uh address some of these concerns. I think through a diversity committee, we'd be able to start shaping short and long-term goals. Uh, you know, the laws, uh, that could be part of a school improvement plan or district, district improvement plan. And most importantly, uh, would be a vehicle to, once we have those goals, is to con- continually revisit them. Uh, we've talked about uh, uh, using a, an SEL assessment tool that uh monitors a, a number of different dimensions of socio, uh, social emotional learning, uh, including some of these same inclusivity um dimensions and starting that next year. So uh, in, in, rather than us waiting every other year, but, you know, do a little bit more um dip-sticking during the year to see how we're doing and, and assessing our progress on goals. And then, like I said, above all, it's, it's important just to remember that it's not going to be a speaker, it's not going to be a book, it's not going to be an event or a, a T-shirt that's going to change the culture. It's going to take time and it's going to be a collection of, of all those, of all those steps, both small and big. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Mills and Principal Scott, for those uh excellent presentations. Uh, at this point, I think it's appropriate to uh open it up to any questions uh or comments from the school committee. Dr. Sullivan, if that's alright with you. I know we're in the middle of your report.
Yeah, it, it is. Thank you and thank you, uh, Principal Mills and Principal Scott, but particularly for your openness. And uh, just want to, you know, say how much I respect you, uh, looking at this data constructively with your staff means a lot.
So uh, Mrs. Colery, uh, lead the way alphabetically as usual.
Um, I would like to say that I remain profoundly grateful for our district's commitment to this tool and the data that's generated from it and making progress in light of it. Um, Principals Scott and Mills, I think you both did a fabulous job presenting this. I think it's important for us to continue to remind ourselves how, how really fortunate we are to have the leadership team that we do in this district that um, as Dr. Sullivan pointed out, doesn't try to As Dr. Sullivan pointed out, doesn't try to sweep this stuff under the rug, doesn't try to. Paint a happy face on things that aren't very happy, but looks at data. Acknowledges it and develops concrete steps and tools. That we can use to move forward to improve the experience for our kids and our community. And I just want to thank you both so much for and. Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins for for staying committed to this tool because I feel like this tool specifically is really valuable. I have to say I was a little bit sad looking at the data because it does clearly. It does clearly define the fact that. The school experience is very challenging for certain kids in our community. But I I do believe that we have the right people. Creating the path forward in light of that. And I want to thank you for being those people and. Dr. Sullivan and I had a conversation earlier today about. Some upcoming efforts that are community wide that I will be. Sending an email to you both about and look forward to getting your thoughts on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colery. Mr. Kearney, any comments or questions?
Absolutely. I also want to echo what Ashley was just saying on this is a great tool. And I was surprised on how much information is there and also want to. Give a shout out to the to everybody who filled it out because it really gives us the information. You know, there's some really good news in there and then there's some concerning. I think that. Both principals have really have their finger on 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 the button here and I really appreciate that. One being my education is important to me 97%. That's really, really good. Almost 90% of kids feel safe in our schools. I think that is brilliant. And generally like school as far as with their teachers and and again. We're so lucky to have such good teachers in our school. And then you start seeing what can we improve on and one of it's like, I like my school. That's it like. That's not really high, especially the the difference. It's funny too, because I looked at male and female in the study. And pretty much they're generally in the same wavelength, except for a few things. And I want to try to point that out. One is that 55% of females say they like their school. Versus 70% being male. The other thing that's really concerning to me is the. The kids who feel stressed out at school and almost 80% of female students feel stressed at school. Versus 52% of the males. And that's something that just stood out to me. And I I thought that is is a concern. The other thing that I thought was great, by the way, is that the drinking and the illegal drugs is down. I think that is a sharp contrast to the commitment the community has made with Safe Harbor, Safe Schools and. You know, it's another awesome thing that we've been working on. Again, it's something that I think when we can fix, how do I like my school? I think of a lot of it and we'll bring it up later with the budgets because I think this is important to know that. Our kids, less than fewer, half the students reported that school buildings are clean, orderly and maintained. So that's something that, again, our students, that might be a reason why they don't like their school. I mean, if half of them don't think they're clean, orderly and maintained, you know, that's not on the school. Sorry, can you hear me? So that's that's really not on the school. That's more like on the community. But I'm really, really grateful. That we put this together and it's really, really a good presentation and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. This is Mar.
Thank you, Principal Mills and Principal Scott for this. I just have a couple of comments. Overall, you know, especially looking at the middle school results and and you think about, we think about all the natural transitions kids have. And I I don't think kids go into the sixth grade and all of a sudden feel. You know, they're not included, you know, especially in in some of some of these subgroups who are talking about. And maybe this is more for Dr. Sullivan. We really need to start. Thinking about it maybe in a more informal way at the elementary levels. Because that's where kids start to feel feel their, you know, so feel their oats and find their way and find their friend groups and start to develop some. Some added attitudes about each other and 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 social situations and. And I don't, I don't know if you can extrapolate this data down, but it would be nice to see some programming or 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 some of the same kind of awareness. Particularly at the Deer Hill grades four and five, where kids really start to develop their own identities about some of some of these issues. Because sometimes by the time you get to middle school, you know, they're they're young people with, you know, their their own. Perceptions and ideas. So I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, talk about that further maybe with with Miss Sullivan.
I was. I can add one thing to that, Ellen, just to. Over the last couple of years, we have had a couple of student groups that have really kind of blossomed. One is the Asian Culture Club in the Diversity Group or the Diversity Club. And they've actually requested to send groups down to Deer Hill and Osgood and read stories and do. You know, origami exercises and basically like just kind of show that it's cool at the high school. Just to model that. So, you know, it's not programmatic necessarily. But even this year in the pandemic, they virtually recorded a lot of different stories that were more diverse than. Maybe kids are used to. So the kids are now starting to mobilize, which I feel like is the key.
And Ellen will also add to that. Sorry, Brian, add to that just by saying. From a programmatic standpoint, I'm very thankful that this data is sweeping into our strategic plan because. I think it may lend it lend itself to point out that maybe we we do a responsive classroom, which does a lot, but maybe we need a little bit more of a targeted approach. With some of these data points through a programmatic. Kind of take on all of it at the elementary level. So something certainly will will look at and play out. But yeah, your your comment is very well taken.
Actually, and I would say too, Ellen, that's a great suggestion as we, you know, continually to look. Look at how we can improve our transition program for our incoming sixth graders. And really stressing those sorts of core values of who we are as a school. That that's a great point and it's a great place to address maybe some of those latent. Biases that are starting to be put in place in upper elementary. To take it on and just sort of normatively say, well, that's that's not who we are is in school. Maybe work with high school or our seventh or eighth graders, but that's a great suggestion.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had a note as I was reading through, how do we incorporate the parents? So I was very happy to see that. Parents are being included in focus groups for information because. You know, we all develop ourselves 24/7, you know, and it's not just things in schools. So I was happy to hear that. And then finally, Principal Scott, on your next steps, my number seven. You wanted to you, your point was to train captains and coaches, which I think is awesome. And in terms of being inclusive, but I also. Might suggest maybe other student leaders. Although recognizing many of our athletic captains are also student leaders in other groups, but we have student council, we have class officers, we have. Club advisors that, you know, as you begin the program, you could migrate it out to some of those groups. That aren't being touched.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. And, you know, we've had a little bit of good conversations, especially at the end of last year with student government. And they lend themselves to that kind of conversation. The captain's council has been the toughest to crack. It's a, you know. I don't want to insult the athletics and Cohasset, but it's a dormant group in terms of. Using their social capital to really make this place inclusive. And a lot of the anecdotal feedback that we get is that there's the athletes and there's everybody else. And so we really want to kind of pinpoint that group to to use their superpowers. For good, because I think once we get people talking, they'll realize. How unique and how valuable and how much they have in common. And and, you know, that's, that's the only reason that that was singled out. Is because I really want to focus on that group specifically.
Yeah, but we also know our athletes are are multi-dimensional. I mean, they have to be, they have to be in our school because our school is so small and. And, you know, we have athletes who are artists and we have athletes who are politicians, you know, who go on Model UN and. We have athletes who are AP students and student councils. So so it's. You know, is it a self fulfilling prophecy that we label them? Athletes only as a as a subgroup and not as student leaders in general. Kind of a rhetorical question, but I I understand what you're saying. So that was, that was it for my questions. Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Ange.
I'd like to just build on on everyone else's comments and compliments. Thank you so much for all of the work that you. And many, many hours that you've put into this. I I really like hearing the process and love hearing about. Building on top of the numbers and and really finding the narrative behind these responses. I think that will be. Really telling as that is that comes to light and we can all kind of hear that and use that to help our our schools and our community grow and improve. And just to echo what Ellen was saying, I know that just in the school system where I work. The bringing this down to younger grades kind of. Overtime has happened. I work with fifth graders and they take a similar but adjusted survey. And then I think it was brought down to fourth grade. This year and it does make a difference, I think, to be able to hear that and just to be able to look at a broader spectrum of responses and. You know, I know Dr. Sullivan and everyone here still values hearing everyone's voice and to be able to broaden that. Would be excellent over time. So thank you all for your work and I look forward to. To to following the the progress as this process continues.
Okay, thank you all. I think the first step to effectuating change is acknowledging and identifying the need for that change. And as I think Principal Mills stated in his presentation that, you know. Institutional change is not something that's going to happen overnight. I think it's important step to identify this. I think. Principal Scott, you sort of. Sort of addressed a major glaring, I mean, you know, all of this is, you know, some of these are are very specific. Facets of the school's operation, the school experience, but, you know, overall, you're looking at that, you know, I like my school figure, which you. You know, spoke about and not knowing whether or not, you know, the low 60s is something that's, you know, in line with the average nationwide. And I think that your statements certainly, you know, struck a chord with me in that that's how I felt is that. Low 60s is far too low for our district. It's not acceptable. I mean, there's really no reason we shouldn't be striving for something in the 90s there. We have a. We have the benefit of being a very small community, a very small school district. And it's somewhere where we should have our finger to the fingers to the pulse of of most every student's concerns and you're always going to have individuals that. You know, can never be happy, but largely our student body should be very happy. They should be very excited about going to school. And I think we're very well, we're very well outfitted. With an excellent leadership team to ensure that that is the case in the coming years, especially as we address these. This data that we just compiled and we and we take steps to. Strategize in ways that we can improve our school district. So. Thank you both for your comments and for your presentation. Unsurprisingly, very well done. And we'll look forward to continuous updates and developments and progress in this front. As we move forward to ever improving the Cohasset public schools. Thank you. Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much, Craig, and thank you all for your very thoughtful comments and we. Look forward to using the data and forging on with our action plans. And once again, thank you, Principal Mills and Principal Scott for your leadership every day. And in particular for your work with the ICIA survey. Look forward to digging in and getting to work on it. So thank you. Have a nice night, both of you. Okay, so moving on from from that. We have a brief professional development update by Dr. Scollins. Dr. Scollins.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. So yes, very, very quick. We had some opportunities in December. On the 14th, we had a half a day professional development and we also have one on January 11th. Lisa Radden, our new Director of Technology and Digital Learning, did a nice job coordinating with EdTech teachers. They're the organization that we've worked with since the beginning of the year on providing some technology training for our teachers. We had two sessions, two different opportunities for the middle and high school teachers to choose from. It was assessment. And then also collaborative digital learning experiences with two different teachers from EdTech. So teachers have the opportunity to choose which one they wanted to do in December and they will do the other one and Monday, the 11th. So. That will be, you know, that'll be a nice continuation for for the staff. Also, on the 14th, Lisa did some work in a sandbox session where she ran some of those, but the teachers really talked about how they wanted some time. With their colleagues to play with some of the new tools that EdTech teacher is providing for them. So. So they'll also have that opportunity and the ESPs from the middle and high school will be working with. Barbara Sawanka. Last, last session, they did some assistive technology. So. They won't be doing that, but the elementary will be ESPs will be learning some more about assistive technology based on what the developmental needs are of those students. Elementary will continue their work with our Bridges consultants. Again, these are the same consultants that we used. In the beginning of the year and they've been a constant with us and our math specialists and our teachers. So they will continue. This is a little bit different. Last, last session, they gave 90 minutes to K through two and the other trainer 90 minutes of the. Three through five. Teachers really would like a shorter time with them and then more opportunity to work with their grade level teams and the mass specialists. Just to really kind of dig into some of those things that are happening in Bridges. It's a new program and and then COVID. Has impacted, you know, the delivery of that instruction. So so they'll be doing that in the afternoons. Our specialists will be working together at the elementary level. So our PE. And music arts, they'll be getting together and working on looking at the technology that they've used and collaborating with each other. And our nurses are going to continue to do all sorts of things to keep updated on. What's happening with COVID and some of the, all the other things that they need to be dealing with as nurses. So. They often have PD outside of those professional development days. So often we'll give them the opportunities to a little more collaboration on those determined days because we can't always pick. And choose when the when their professional development is going to be available. So that's our quick update.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins. Any questions for Dr. Scollins?
Anyone? Thank you so much, Dr. Scollins. And for all the, again, for all the effort that goes into all of that. I know it's a it's a real bear to schedule all those professional developments and and work that out. And I think that. In many ways, it sort of goes taken for granted and and we shouldn't take that for granted. It's it's a huge undertaking. So thank you for all your efforts in in doing that. I know it's only a small part of what you do, but nevertheless, a pretty big job.
Thank you. It's actually very enjoyable though. I know what you mean about the scheduling, but it's really, really fun to be able to offer opportunities to teachers and. Staff related to what they want. A lot of times we survey them, we ask them what they're looking for. So it's very teacher driven. Often. So so it's exciting, but thank you for acknowledging.
It's nice to have Dr. Scollins working closely with Lisa Radden. And then also, you know, thank you to the teachers for buckling down and working through the professional development. Time is so precious now. You know, clearly everyone sees the need for that professional development, but, you know, I just appreciate them doing that. So if I move on now, if that's okay, Chairman McCollin?
Of course.
Okay, so our next on our list here is an update of our proposed FY22 operating capital budget. As the calendar would have it, we still have some work to do in finalizing some of our line budgets and. Some of the the items on this. So I I know that Sue is going to present where we are right now, but I do believe that. At our next meeting, we'll present a little more of a refined budget with as well as our line budget. Correct, Sue?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. So I will share my screen now and. Okay, wonderful. So I will share my screen now and, um, just one second.
And of course, Dr. Sullivan, this is just, uh, being presented by our Director of Finance and Operations, uh, Ms. Susan Owen.
Yes, thank you. Absolutely. Excuse me for that. Can everybody see my screen? Not yet?
Not yet.
How about now? You got it?
There it is.
Okay, take it away. Um, yes, thank you, Craig. And take it away, uh, Director of Finance and Operations, Susan Owen.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Uh, so this is just a very preliminary draft of what FY twenty-two, um, is looking like. We've, um, we've sent out budget in budget worksheets to all the department heads, the principals, um, the stakeholders, you know, that have interest in, in each department. And I've gathered all that information. Put it together here. The, the first thing I want to talk about is the basic rollover. So the basic rollover basically is, um, all the, all the staff that have bargaining unit contracts, we move their steps. Steps and lanes is what I would call them. So everyone, everyone has moved a step. We've increased, you know, stipends that need to increase. We've increased longevity. Longevity based on years of service, um, all that rolled into one and the fact that just about all of our bargaining units are up for, um, new contracts coming into the next year. So, um, this placeholders of some type of, um, projection of what, um, type of increases may or may not happen, um, anywhere from, uh, you know, one percent to three percent. Not sure because we haven't begun negotiations yet, but just a ballpark. It's about six hundred and eighty-five thousand just to roll our budget forward. Which is a significant amount of money. I, um, some of the questions were, you know, it's higher than last year. Part of that is because last year, um, we had a contract. We, we knew what the rates were going to be. Um, we don't know this, this, this upcoming year. Um, so we, we had to plan for that. The second item here, which I don't know what happened to the words that went with it. The one hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars is a decrease in our circuit breaker funding between the two years. So, we're, we're usually in arrears each year. So what we received last year in circuit breaker, which was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars. It was also a thirty-five percent reimbursement rate. That rolled in and we use that to build, build our FY twenty-one budget. For FY twenty-two, we'll use the FY twenty-one, um, reimbursement that are coming in. That reimbursement rate is at seventy percent. So, right out of the gate, we're getting less back. And our tuitions were a little bit lower. So, the circuit breaker that we're going to be using from this year rolling into next year will be six hundred and five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven. So it's a difference of a hundred and twenty, um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, right there, we, we have to make up the difference there unless, um, unless we tap into the incoming circuit breaker for this year, which typically we don't do in this district and, and lots of districts don't. They like to be one year in arrears just to be safe. So if you, if you further down on the list, or, or our staffing requests, so, um, department heads and principals had requested, um, certain things. So, for instance, there's a, this forty thousand dollars of the high school, um, wants to add a point five social studies teacher. Thirty thousand dollars for the middle school to increase the reading specialist. A one point O technology specialist, um, to be shared by the middle and the high school for fifty, sixty thousand. I put a placeholder here, fifty thousand dollars to at least begin the process of discussions of reducing the full day kindergarten tuition. This obviously at fifty thousand, it's going to take us multiple years to bring that dollar amount down to free if that's the direction we're going. But I figured it was a starting point and, you know, to have, start the discussions and, and decide which direction we want to go. Um, and then there was an ad of a grade seven sped teacher that came through. The hundred and nineteen thousand, which is an increase to supplies and materials, that was, that was, um, came from all the different departments. Um, some of the big ticket items were in science, they were looking at, um, advanced chemistry textbooks for, for twenty-five thousand dollars. So that, that took up a big piece of that. There were, um, cleaning supplies for the arts program for instruments. I guess they need special, special cleaning, supplies to clean the instruments based on what's been going on with the COVID, um, situation. The, um, elementary schools were looking for the continuation of the consumables for the Bridges Math Program. So there was an increase in that budget. The World Language was looking at some online textbooks. So the, it's a wide variety of what made up that additional supplies and materials money. But those are some of the kind of things that make up that number. If we just look at rolling the district forward, that, the half stoos, we're at a three point two-six percent increase to our overall budget from twenty-one. If we get into the staffing and the other additional supplies, materials, that brings us up to about five percent increase. Um, these definitely are, you know, just the beginning discussions. Pat and Leslie and I are meeting early on next week with principals, um, to go over some of these requests to see, you know, can we discuss, you know, are, are the, are the necessities? Are they wish lists or are there other, you know, other things that we can do differently? Um, that won't cost us, um, an additional three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in supplies and materials or staffing. So like I said, this is definitely preliminary. I don't know if there's any, any questions regarding it. It's, it's raw data. I mean, on the next meeting, we'll have the line item budget. And we'll have more clarity on these numbers. I did have a conversation with Dawn Pyatt today um, about what, what he's thinking the number might be looking at and he's shooting for around three percent. He said he can't guarantee anything right now because it's still very early on for him as well. But he's, when I told him that just our rollover costs were going to be about three percent, he said that's probably in the ballpark. But he didn't want me to give out a definitive yes or no because he's not sure yet. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Are there any questions from the school committee members? Mrs. Cleary?
The technology specialist is not the computer science teacher we've been talking about for years, correct? Different.
I don't believe so.
Yes, that, those are two different things. Right. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cleary?
I would just say that, uh, a lot of these are really important stuff. I mean, you're talking about a, a social, social studies teacher, a reading specialist. Um, I just think that this is, this is going to be tough to, I mean, I know it's three percent, but we're looking at three point eight five as raw numbers. We, we're looking to get like five point six, nine percent. Just, just throwing that number out there that, uh, you know, if we were, we should fully fund it, you know, I, I think we need the five point six, nine percent. I just don't know where we're going to get the money, but, uh, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the, uh, the back and forth. The, the problem is, is that we're still going to underfund the schools. And, um, I just think that's not acceptable. So I think it's five point six nine. It's five point six nine. That's the price. And, um, you know, I think we should all reach out and just, you know, go over the numbers. These, these aren't things that we can't do without. You know, we're talking about sped teachers. We're talking about a reading specialist for thirty thousand dollars. I mean, that's so important for kids, especially in the middle school. So if we're going to improve our middle school, this is a good start. I just want to, no, I appreciate, I, again, I appreciate, um, the, the need and the, and the, you know, the town people, but I just also want to know that it's, we need five point six, nine percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Mrs. Mar?
Um, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Owens, for putting this together. Um, I, of course, would like to see a lot of the detail. I'd like to see the, uh, population by step and column to see where our teachers are aging. You know, because some of them, by the time you get to the highest step, you know, there's, there's no step increase there. I just want to make sure we're, we're looking at that properly. The other thing that's not incorporated into this, you know, into this, um, worksheet is, is the offsets and, and Mrs. Owens and I have had some conversation about offsets. Last year we had about one point five million. I couldn't figure out why, you know, in the town warrant, our budget was voted at twenty million, nine hundred and sixty thousand. But on the, um, five-year forecast of revenue and expenses, the number, the number is lower and I couldn't figure out why. And I think it's because of the offset. So we have to come to the number. We have our budget, but then we have to come to the number that we're going to ask the town for. And we have to look at our beginning balances and our revolving accounts, which have been cut into a little bit this year. Athletics, transportation, kindergarten, as we know, will probably end on a zero balance, which, you know, will be the first time in a long time. So we're going to, going to have to carefully manage those. If the recently passed COVID relief, uh, package and what I've read, and I don't know if it's true, maybe Dr. Sullivan, you can chime in, is the second wave for this current year is going to be four times maybe what we saw before. Comes through. We had looked at some of the, um, revolving funding to offset some of the hires that we made. Correct? For FY twenty-one?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so we, we might have, we might have, be able to rework some of those revolving so that we have more to draw on from next.
Correct.
So, um, I think once we know exactly what that, that number is and, and in the COVID, you know, round two, um, we, we can take a look, we can take a look at that. Um, I, Ashley commented, Mrs. Cleary commented on the technology specialist. This has been talked about for a couple of years at the high school level. It's, uh, if I understand correctly, it's what Cassie O'Brien role is at the elementary level.
It's exactly that role.
Yeah. So it, it's that role and, um, I, I have like major concerns about we're still deferring computer science curriculum and it's in the frameworks. And I, and it's a big ticket. It's not only, it's not only instructors and teachers, but it's also the curriculum. And we're not complying with the frameworks. And this has been the third year. We haven't even addressed it and it's been in our strategic plan or, you know, the end of, actually it's going to be five years because it was, it's been in our strategic plan for five years. So, um, I, I don't, I don't know why it's not an ask. I don't know why, why administration isn't saying we need this, um, in, in terms of, um, you know, what priorities are. Um, I, I personally feel like we've kind of beefed up our support, our technology support roles. And I'd like to start really putting some money back into the classrooms, whatever money we have. And, but that's, that's my personal, um, point of view. I like the facts, Mrs. Owens, that you, you started to include some offsets for kindergarten tuition. You're right. It's going to take some time, but fifty thousand dollars basically is five hundred dollars, which is a, which is a nice decrease in our tuition number, I think, for families. And I think it's a good start. Um, so I just, when you get more information, we can have a subcommittee meeting or I'm happy to come in and, and look at some of the detail and grind through it so that we really understand, um, you know, all, all of the details. I'm wondering on, um, things like the, the cleaning supplies for the instruments. If we're not in a pandemic situation next year, because this is for next year's budget, are those supplies still needed for the instruments? Or has it come about because of the pandemic that whatever these supplies are, are best practice? I, I, I don't, I don't know. Um, but I think that would be an interesting, uh, question. The other thing we should look at as we begin to forecast the end of FY twenty-one is, um, if we have residual money, we should look at the textbooks, the advanced chemistry textbooks and the world language online textbooks and we can pre-purchase those. So we ought to keep that amount of money, you know, in, in mind as we look at year end. And that's all I have.
I think some of those specifics will come out in our conversations next week with principals. The principals are, um, in the process of meeting with department chairs. So like your question regarding the instrument cleaning will be, will be answered. And, you know, obviously we know, uh, our job is to trim those down to, uh, to meaningful but appropriate numbers. And yeah, the, I mean, today we had a brainstorm session, a, a visioning session regarding technology for about two hours with, as a leadership team and really talked about, um, technology as really a three-legged stool involving, um, professional development, curriculum and hardware and how we were going to have to make sure that all three of those tied in. The district hasn't strategically built, uh, a plan for, um, a, a vertical plan for instructional track, uh, which is something we, we know we have to do. And, uh, it's, it's getting there with all the other pieces we have to put together that, uh, haven't really been strategically placed i- is, is difficult. And, um, yeah, we, I hear, I hear your frustration and share it with the computer science. It just to float it out there right now on its own, um, isn't a, a strategic as we would like it to be. But I'll let Dr. Scollins, if you want to mention anything about it. Cause it is a, it is a definite need here in the district. There's no question about it.
No, it is part of how we want to build it out like you said. We are, the frameworks are being addressed in courses. So it's, so it's, it's not like it's, we're not doing any of it, but I do agree, we do need to really look at what does our computer science actually pre-K through twelve look like? Um, and today, like Dr. Sullivan said, we talked with, um, with the principals about the leadership team, um, and looking at the elementary level too, and, and how, how we built that out. For our, in, in our labs and our experiences for students and, and what their needs are. So.
And it was, it was our whole leadership team. We had Ron and, um, Dan there too. And of course Lisa and everybody here and the principals, but it's, um, it, it's, it's a definite need. And, uh, it, it just, you know, one of the things we could also offer the school committee would be, uh, a meeting as we have in the past. It would have to be a school committee meeting, but we have, uh, budget workshop to hear a little more about the, uh, needs and kind of the, the directions and leanings we have right now. And, and that might be helpful for you. So that's just, I, I, I offer that as, as something we considered in the budget process. Um, and didn't, it's not on there, but it is something we could do that might be helpful a- as well as meeting in the finance and facilities, you know?
I, I thought, I thought last year's meeting with the, the building principals was terrific. You know, with the leadership team hearing, hearing everybody's budget. I, I thought it was great. And I, I feel and I'll be very candid, we have, last year, we um, put great emphasis on social emotional learning and supports. And we've added staff, a lead guidance counselor, we've added adjustment counselors, we added support staff, we added even after budget around that, will fortify that. I feel like it's time we start investing in the classroom and the academics. The, the true academic, you know, experience, whether with, with text, with stat, with teaching staff. Because I think, I think we've built everything around it. We were just the other night at Capital on technology and we were rightfully asked, well, what are, what are the student achievement outcomes? You, you hope to get with the technology. And I think we have to, have to kind of keep circling back to, the fact that teachers teach, you know, the building doesn't teach, the teachers teach. Um, and, um, how are we going to support academic achievement, um, for all of our students?
Yeah. I mean, I'd say, I agree. I'd say the technology supports though do directly, support the teachers and their teaching and. And so that, that's, that's why that's there. But yeah, no, definitely. I mean, I think the, the, obviously the social studies teacher was a need put forth by the high school. I do feel good about the way we've supported ourselves socially, emotionally, but I, I should also note that. We were really lacking in that. I mean, it was, it was a place where we were critically short. So, and, and so to, you know, when you're choosing between increasing something that we have a lot of. Or giving us something we don't have any of. We chose to increase what we didn't have any of. Which was, you know, we were so critically short in those supportive areas. So you know, you're, you're looking at where do you fill the gaps and needs? And I would agree with you. I think now we're in a, a situation where we do need to, to, to focus on. Some of those academic achievement areas as we did with our adoption of our math program. But, but I, you know, I just, I just want to make it clear that it wasn't that we didn't see that. We did. We just reacted to what we felt was a critical need and critical shortage, particularly as we came into. The, the ever-changing and stressful times that we're facing. So.
Don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not criticizing the.
No, I don't think you are.
We were, we're, you know, we all voted the budget and we all voted on, on, on those, myself included and, and, and it came out loud and clear in the budget workshop with. With district leadership. Every single principal discussed the fact that they needed the supports for SEL. So. I, I'm glad and proud of that fact that, that we did that because it's so important. And I'm just saying, now we have to keep moving and, and I just. Want to, you know, make sure we stay focused on what's going on in the classroom.
Yes.
That, that's my point.
Uh, no, it's a, it's a good, it's a good one and it's, it's correct. So.
Okay. Thank you for those important thoughts. Mrs. Moran for your ever keen oversight and critical approach of the budget. It's a huge asset to the school committee and, and the school district at large. So thank you. Mrs. St. Ange.
I, I really don't have anything to add. I feel like. I feel like I should. But I don't, I, I appreciate all of the other questions that were asked and they kind of answered what I was, was wondering about. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, in addition to seconding the, the, the suggestion for a budget workshop. In the not-too-distant future, I would just, the only question I have, which is sort of, isn't directly related to this, but, but. Your presentation, Mrs. Owen, caused me to think of this. Where are we in terms of, or when will we know? Whether or not we'll be able to reimburse families for the kindergarten tuition paid for this. For this year. I'm just wondering, I know that. That's what, there was, there was, there was an issue with that at the beginning of the year, a, a very reasonable one. And, you know, obviously we couldn't offer free kindergarten without defunding the program. So. Our solution to that was potentially offering reimbursements at some point. And I, I'm sure it's still too early at this juncture to, to know, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, when, when, when would we have a more definitive position on that?
I would, I would say probably May, May, more towards the end of May, end of May. I, I know, you know, people are interested to see, you know, where, where we are at. But based on, you know, the initial presentation I gave, it was basically our, our revenue coming in. Is just, it, it's covering our expenses. And, and a slight, you know, surplus. Because we're still funding those teachers full-time and those classrooms full-time. So. At this point, I really don't know whether it will be reimbursement or not. I mean, I really have to wait till we get closer to the end of the school year because it's, it's not like our expenses are less.
No, I mean, that's a perfectly acceptable response. I was just, I didn't know if there was any sort of.
No, it's, it may, it is on our radar. I mean. It's definitely something on our list, you know, and I know Ellen mentioned offsets and we, we've talked back and forth because like our transportation, you know, we, we had. You know, significant amount. Of a, a balance starting the year, but because we don't have any paid rides. That, that's going to probably offset what the school budget doesn't have to cover full transportation salaries. So that, that account will probably be, you know, almost be down to zero.
Okay. Comments or questions before we move on to the student services update?
Well, to just quickly, Craig, we, we, we know that buses and transportation is a, is a concern and something we brought up. In terms of trying to provide, we do feel we could utilize our MEKO grant. To, and correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, Susan, but to try to bolster our, our own individual. The, the MEKO grant has increased a bit from what I understand. And we're, we do believe we're able to get some of our transportation for our MEKO students out of that grant, which I think will be helpful. To know. But there's a, there's a, there's a lasting, you know. Feature to that as well. So that's something that we're also trying to work out and it's not mentioned in the budget. Correct, Sue?
Correct. No, you're, you're correct. We're, we're still working out those details and looking, looking at different. Different aspects. The other, the other piece was, you know, just an update on capital. We went with capital on Monday. I thought it went pretty well. I, I didn't know what to expect. It was two, two and a half hours. But we got through our list. There was lots and lots of questions. We have, definitely have homework. We did get the GMAX report back. Today, early today or, yeah, it was either early today or, or late yesterday afternoon.
You maxed it for the turf, for the turf?
For the, for the turf, correct. I, if you read through the report, I think I forwarded to everyone. It basically says right now, we, we fall within the average, we, we, we fall within the range. But when I talked to Steve, he said. Do it again in the warmer weather and that truck will be, truck, track will be all bubbled. So it does depend on, it, it's weather dependent. So that was just, that was one thing that came out of it. Other than that, like I said, I'm looking for blueprints. I spent some time today. Looking for blueprints for the high school to drill down into that science room. Because I need the footprints for that, for that before I can get started with having an architect look at it and tell us exactly. What it's going to cost us to put, to, to update that classroom into a science lab. So, I mean, we definitely have homework going on.
Yeah. Craig, could I make a comment as we're circling back to capital? First of all, Mrs. Owen, this is fabulous work. This is, I love the little price tag. With all the pictures and it really, it really, I, I just want people to know that.
Thank you.
This is a $2.7 million request for next year and this extends out to almost 8 million in the next six years. So I just want to reiterate the fact that. This is a big priority to the town because our buildings are very important and. I gotta say, I'm, I'm proud to work on the committee with Ellen in, in the last couple of years to. Be able to put this together and to make sure that it, it's something that will continue. For years to come. And I'm just so grateful and so pleased to see this presentation. Because you really seem to know what the community needs and, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Not only as a school mayor, a community member, but also as a parent.
Thank you. I mean, we do, I think, need to have. A finance subcommittee meeting. To, to discuss capital, prioritize capital at some point. I'm, because I know they want us to come back with a prioritized list. So, you know, wouldn't, it wouldn't be too soon to schedule something like that. And we could also talk about. The, more of the budget details.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I did talk with Mr. McClellan about it. He asked me for an update. On the capital budget meeting and I, I think. I think in terms of prioritizing, I think the whole committee should be involved and perhaps at our. Next meeting, school committee meeting. We can have that conversation. I, I don't know how full that agenda is going to be, but I think it should be. In terms of the priorities, it should be the full committee. To, to do that. If you want to meet in the interim or if we have questions on things. Or you wanted to be up some of, answering some of capital budget questions, just let me know and I'm, I'm happy to help. Yeah. That, that's kind of where Mr. McClellan and I were thinking that the whole committee should look at the priorities.
I agree because I think it's a, from my view anyway, it's a, it's a tough task because. They're all pretty, pretty needed. So it is a.
They're all important.
Yeah. So I agree with you. Yeah, and also, you know, and I know we've, we're all kind of working on different committees too. And, you know, I want to bring up even with the solar committee, like. One of the things that we, we were talking about was. You know, having good enough roofs to put them on top of the roof instead of. Putting these carports in, which basically I, I think are, I did some research on those. I wasn't. Too impressed with the, the whole thing about that, but I think the point is, is that, you know, if we were to be able to fix our roofs, then we would be able to. So I think it's important that everybody, because I don't want to discount what. Other folks are doing on other committees because it's, it's well-respected work. It's just that if we can kind of put it into play with. Our strategic. Next year's, you know, the next five years on what makes sense. So I think it's a priority that all of us. Come together and figure out for this meeting. So I'm in full support of that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Owen. If there's, if there's nothing more, Dr. Sullivan, maybe we move on to the student services updates?
Nope.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Sue, for your report and moved and thank you for your patience in waiting. Barbara.
Happy New Year, everyone. It's nice to see everyone again.
And Mrs. Sarwanka, just so everyone knows at home, this is Barbara Sarwanka, our Director of Student Services here at the Cohasset Schools.
I'm falling short of my intros. My, I'll have to make it as a resolution.
Well, I, I usually do it, so it's not, it's all right. It's, it's. I just want to make sure everyone knows who's who. We see each other all the time, but.
Well, I know them now, so I don't have to keep introducing them. Just. Thank you, Craig.
So last month when I was here, I presented a bit on my goals. And I wanted to kind of follow up with some specifics. Regarding that of some things that have come up recently to update all of you in terms of where we are at with some of those things. So, you know, it's kind of nice following the budget report with this. Desi has put out. Two grants for which we applied for under the Office of Student Services. One of them is for early childhood and one of them. Is for special education overall. And all of them are for kind of the excess costs of special education under this COVID-19 world that we're all kind of living in. And that goes directly to some of the things that we were talking about last month in terms of those gaps in learning for kids and. And how is remote learning kind of being handled by our neviest populations and things like that. So. We have found out already that the early childhood grant was, was approved and. I'll be working with the pre-K teacher there. We already targeted some ideas of things that we want to put in place to really engage with some of our youngest and most vulnerable kids. In this environment where they, you know, even though they are here with us, they are kind of, you know, more isolated and not as engaged as. They can, they can, could be in the past because of the social distancing, the masking and what additional resources we can put in place for them. And, and I'm sure we will hear very soon on the next grant as well and see what else it is that we can use it for to continue to provide for our students. Another thing that is coming up that I wanted to talk a little bit about is that Desi has been working very hard, as you're aware, I'm sure. In the area of dyslexia. And our new regulations and a final document is going to come out in February. It is going to include. A screening tool and it is going to be for all students with a focus on identification and support of all students at risk. Students with learning disabilities, students with reading needs, both in general ed and special education. So we're really very much looking forward to that coming out and continuing our work in reading. With all of our students, but particularly those on IEPs. We have some of our teachers right now who are finishing up some reading trainings. So some of that will be finishing up very shortly because they've been able to do it virtually and that will be some. Great additional tools that they will be having. Also, this is something that didn't come through, but I want to share it because it reflects really the commitment of our educators. There was a Desi-sponsored class that would have been a 45-hour commitment. For anyone who was taking it and our elementary team chair and three of our teachers. Were interested in forming a team and even in this, you know, pandemic time that is really kind of stressing everyone's resources and time in terms of. You know, their education. The, the amount of time that they're spending on these new educational tools and things like that to really reach all kids. They were nevertheless willing to engage in this. It was so popular that unfortunately they were not able to get in it, but it still deserves a shout out. Because it shows really not only their interest in this area of reading and dyslexia app, but also. Their commitment in this time in which they really are very, very stretched. And I'm sure it probably will come up again and they will be able to join in and take it, but, you know, just like I said, kind of a shout out for their commitment to that. At this particular time and, and knowing that they have that commitment and that energy to take it when it comes up again. That's great. Another thing that I wanted to bring up that I'm not sure, you know, people are fully aware of is that. The, the group ACE, the Massachusetts Administrators for Special Education is really just a wonderful association. It is an association that when I came on board, we joined this year. It is really the lead association representing special education administrators in Massachusetts. And it provides really wonderful resources to all of its members. One of the things that it provides to us. Is the opportunity to go to three professional development sessions a year. And what I have done this year is, the first one was in October and I had my secondary team chair, Michael Stapleton, attend it. And bring back all of the information to all of us and then we dispersed it. With the staff. One of the nice benefits of it having to be on Zoom this year was that they shared not just all of the paper resources with us, but also the videos. So I pushed those out to the staff and have been following up with the staff in terms. Through my department meetings with them. So that they also have the benefit of the experience. Our, our special education legal counsel. Murphy Lamera Murphy and specifically Paige Tobin. Is one of the people who are one of the kind of co-sponsors for ACE. So she presents frequently at those. And did this past year. So our staff kind of got to hear and see her in action. Talking about all of, you know, the legal work that we need to do around our response to COVID-19, so on and so forth. As well as seeing Ellen Bloom speak about IEPs. And that was really timely because we know that the IEP is under review under Desi and is going to have some tweaks and changes to it in upcoming years. So I'm really happy to be able to be a part of that organization here in Cohasset and to bring all of those benefits to our full staff. The other thing is that, you know, since the new year, as I spoke to you last month. I have reached out to all of the principals and. Engaged in their child study teams and look forward to joining those meetings and those groups. And continuing to do the work and advance all of the tiered supports that we can for all of our students. And they are, of course, very welcoming and it's always a pleasure to partner and work with them and. Very excited to jump in, but also for them to kind of. Have me do that and be on board. So that's something I'm really looking forward to. Does anyone have any special areas of question for me?
Scaleri? Mr. Kearney?
First of all, thank you for the great job, uh, work that you're doing. Are you starting to see, how are the children adjusting to like? With remote learning and what are some of the? I guess some of the things that we've come up with that have improved in the last. Say, six months or so. What, what are we seeing that, that we can say that we're improving on?
Right. So, you know, I have to say, we've been very kind of flexible and nimble in. The special education world in terms of these remote learning experiences that kids are having. We've seen some students who really have. You know, been able to adapt to it very well. And been able to, you know, really kind of shift their learning into different modes like that. And then we have had students that for some of whom, we have really seen that it's been very difficult, but with the principals and the health and safety. but with the principles and the health and safety metrics, we've been able to sometimes open things up and offer additional days to those students. And that's been very wonderful. And it's been an ongoing process, not as I said, it, you know, just kind of that first outcome from me that, you know, these were the students who fit the metrics, but it's continued to be an ongoing process. We've been looking at students, we've been looking very carefully at their ability to access the curriculum and to make progress. Progress reports have come out in the world of special education, um, in our district for all, um, levels now. And we've been able to open up to a few students that we've needed to, to offer more in-person time, whether it be through walk-in services or additional days. The other things we have done is we've really taken a look at individually how we are engaging with students remotely and really working in a very self-advocacy kind of way, even with our, as young as our upper elementary students, to find out what we see as working for them, but also hear from them what is working and what isn't, and make adaptations to that remote learning so that it's a better match, so that things are distilled down more or are less overwhelming. Um, you know, maybe fewer things on a slide deck, things like that, to really meet those individual needs. And it continues to be a work in progress and it will continue to be all the way through, I am sure. But we continue to kind of change and evolve with it and hopefully meet those needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar, any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, just, just one question and it kind of overlaps with Mrs. Owen's budget presentation. One of, one of the items that's being requested is a 1.0 sped teacher in grade seven. And I'm wondering, is, is that to expand co-teaching or are we developing a bigger cohort that we can address their needs in-house as opposed to going out of district? Could you explain a little bit?
Sure. So what we're seeing there and for next year, it would be a grade seven teacher, but it might evolve. And I've had some conversations with Sue about this, how, um, we're going to be need to really look at that and look at how we're posting for that. Because what we're seeing is we're seeing a little bit of a bubble. We're seeing some kids who are going to be coming up, who are going to need more reading supports than did this current year. So that the teacher who usually provides a lot of that extra reading support for us was able to be a little bit flexible and provide some more general services to some of our kids who needed them. And that's not going to be the case in the next year. So we're seeing some of that is going to be taken away. And there's a little bit of a bubble for grade seven then, who is going to be needing some more, uh, supports. And in order actually, Ellen, to continue to provide some of those inclusive opportunities at those levels that we want to, as well as some of that specialized instruction, we're going to need an additional person to do that. That person might need to continue to kind of loop for a little while and we're going to keep an eye on that and see what we need to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. St. Orange, any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm just curious, uh, Mr. Ranka, about the dyslexia screening and just grade levels and the tool that, that you plan to put in place.
Right. So that's coming out directly from Desi. We expect, like I said, kind of the final to come out from them in February. And, um, you know, certainly while I, I've, you know, been engaging in those meetings that I do twice a month and kind of been hearing the direction that things are going and things like that, um, we wait for that final to come out, before we really put anything in place.
Do we have a screener in place currently?
As far as a dyslexia screener, yes. Um, Dr. Scollins can speak to it a little bit. We do.
Yeah, we have the Shilwitz, which we, um, worked on last year to create our protocol for, um, how to address our needs for dyslexia. So we have a whole protocol of how we evaluate our students. And so there are indicators that, um, when we assess all our kids, when they come in, we look at, um, you know, we look at DIBBLES, we, we use, um, depending on the school DRAs, there's a variety of assessments we use. Then if a student shows up with, um, a couple of red flags, then we would then look at, look at it deeper and then maybe, and then maybe use the Shilwitz. We're not using it universally yet. We need to, we're just really using it for that next stage when we have a kid that we are concerned about.
And the Shilwitz book on dyslexia and that screener really is considered still the gold standard.
But then the Desi, like the plan that Desi is going to be putting out is that that's for universal screening?
There is going to be, yes, there is going to be universal screening. It's going to be much more targeted. And what it's really being born out of is that the identification and the diagnosis of dyslexia came out from Desi a couple of years ago that really could land in schools. So this is a follow-up to that. And what it's really going to do is focus on that identification and support system for all students. Just like we kind of have with our screeners in place in the district, it's not going to be just for students on IEPs. It's going to be for those students who are at risk, those students we see with reading needs, those students who bubble up for us.
Right. Cause as always, we want to make sure we get those kids as soon as we can, right?
Absolutely.
Of course. Yeah. I'm just curious because I, I think, I, I think we're talking about the same class, the Desi class about, um, dyslexia, dysgraphia and dyscalculia. I took it when it first came out. I was in the first round, which is very exciting. And one of their recommendations was to use the Ran Raz as a universal screener in K and one. And that's what, the schools where I work have done. And it's just been an interesting tool to use in K and one. We haven't done it this year because of, um, COVID. But last year we used it. It was just, it was just very telling. It was just great data to have. So.
Oh, maybe you and I, you know, outside of this, can connect on that. Yes, I'd love to. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Sarwanka, for your update. Unless there are any further comments, we'll move on to the school committee section of the agenda. So, uh, the first item under, Dr. Sullivan, is there anything else?
I just wanted to add that, you know, um, we can always tailor, uh, any of, um, Barbara's updates to a particular topic. You know, she covers a great, a great many staff and, uh, that have sort of disparate responsibilities in the district. And, uh, she has a lot of, a lot of, uh, you know, coals in the fire, I guess, so to speak. So i- if, if there is some, uh, future item that you'd like her to update on specifically, you can certainly do that. So just keep that in mind as, as we progress forward. And that's it. Sorry to interrupt you, Craig.
No, no problem. You know, that goes for, uh, for any facet of the schools. And I, I hope that the school committee members all feel, uh, free to do that when I forge the email with the potential agenda, the draft agenda. Please let me know if there's anything that you'd like to, uh, have included in that. And, uh, and, uh, that goes for community members as well. If there are points, some, some sort of issue that, that you want raised, I mean, you know, we're here for you. So feel free to email me and, and let me know. That, that, that goes for every facet of the school, not just the student services, but certainly student services as well. So moving on to the school committee section, the first item, uh, under that section of the agenda is the, um, the policy, uh, the, the proposed policy revisions by the policy subcommittee. I know you guys spent a, a solid amount of time doing this. I don't know. I know it's Mrs. Scolari and Mrs. St. Orange generally that are our, uh, policy gurus. I don't know who wants to lead the charge here with this, uh, but take it away, one of you.
I'm happy to do that. Um, so as Chairman McLuhan referenced, um, Mrs. St. Orange and Dr. Scollins, and I have been meeting pretty regularly. Um, we made a goal for ourselves to more closely align our district's policy manual with the draft mask manual. That's online. Um, we feel like that will make our manual easier to keep track of, uh, easier to reference and we'll be better able to update policies as needed. Once we sort of do one sweep and try to get everything in line, we can then go back and look, take a deeper dive. So with Mrs. Mars' help, which we are very grateful for, we sort of identified the, um, policies in the book that don't right now align with the mask reference manual. And our first batch of, um, suggested changes is included, I emailed them. Has everyone had a chance?
I can, um, Ashley, sorry to interrupt. I can put them on the screen if you'd like.
Um, hold on. It, thank you. It's just a lot of content. So I just wanted to sort of get the committee's, um, input on how they think best to handle this process. So for me, what makes sense, this is a lot of information. It's not actually a lot of substantial change. It's just a lot of paper. It's a lot of material to digest. So what I would like to do, and, and I know that I didn't get it to you with an abundance of time before this meeting. What I would like to do is get a feeling from the committee, um, about whether you feel prepared to discuss any questions or any input you have on this material. Or if you feel like it would be best to table that discussion until the next meeting.
My feeling would be to, um, to, uh, have discussion amongst ourselves, so long as everyone feels like they had a, an opportunity to read it. I did. And I'm sure that you and Mrs. St. Orange did. And it sounds like Mrs. Mar would have. And Mr. Kearney, uh, formerly doing business as Craig McLuhan, uh, he has, uh, been all over everything, um, this meeting. So I'm, I'm guessing he may have, uh, read it over as well. So if we can have a meaningful discussion tonight, that'd be great. I, my only, and I, I would even, I, I, I would even be willing to vote on it. My only apprehension about voting on it is I don't know if it's something that we should somehow, you know, provide an opportunity for the public to look at before we actually vote on it. But we can certainly have our discussions tonight. Um, again, as you mentioned, uh, Mrs. Scolari, not a lot of substantive changes here from the mask language. So I don't know, um, you know, how detrimental any of these changes would be. But nevertheless, uh, any policy changes are likely, uh, something of significance. So, or of interest to the public. So I don't know. And, and I'm open to suggestions. That's just my thought. I'm not, uh, I'm not mandating that we move forward in that, 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 that manner. But, uh, that, that seems to make sense to me. Um, I don't know if Mrs. Mar, Mr. Kearney have any, you know, thoughts about how we do that? Happy to hear that.
I'm prepared to, I, I, I went through them all. I only have one comment out of all of them. And, um, I would be prepared to vote on them tonight.
Great. Okay. Mr. Kearney? Okay. Great. Uh, Mrs. Mar, what do you?
So the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Sorry.
So the only comment I had on the, uh, adoption was policy BDF A dash E dash one, which was a school improvement plan. And the only, um, comment I had that I liked about our existing policy was that it linked the school improvement plans to our strategic plan. And that's not included in this particular policy. It is referenced in one of the subsequent policies regarding school councils and school improvement plans. But, um, I, I don't, I don't know if that could, um, you know, be, that could be incorporated into point number one. Consistent with the goals and standards and the strategic plan. You could just, you know, insert it there and, and that would suffice. But I was okay with every other recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Kearney?
Including that in BDF A E one, that's recommended for adoption or in BDF A?
BDF A dash E one, that's recommended for adoption.
Okay.
I would just comment that, um, thank you. Um, this has been, I can imagine a lot of work for the subcommittee and, and, um, Lydia and, and Ashley, thank you. This is, this is a lot of work. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, I, I'm comfortable voting on it. I just didn't know if we wanted to give it some time, but I'm, I'm certainly comfortable doing it. You know, these were all, uh, these recommendations, which I reviewed, um, are, were made by, uh, three very intelligent people that I'm lucky enough to know. And I'm comfortable with the way that they are. I didn't see anything that, that I felt strongly about changing. So, uh, I'm, I'm ready to vote on it. If everyone feels that way, we could just do it. So I'd, I'd entertain a motion at this time. If anyone wants to make a motion, we can, I think we can adopt them in a bundle as, uh, as amended or proposed by Mrs. Mar, the change that she just articulated in her last comment. We could, we could probably just, uh, vote on them as a bundle. So if there's a motion to that effect on the floor.
Can I just ask a question to make sure I'm clear? So can I? So I'll just say that point one on BDF A E one recommended for adoption would be school improvement plans will link with the district's strategic plan. And then point two will say the educational goals, right? Is that okay?
Um, you, that's fine. Or in point one, just with the goals and standards and strategic plan, instead of creating another bullet point, I could just put the goal, standards and strategic plan. And then I think we're covered.
Okay. Good. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt these policy revisions as proposed by the policy subcommittee? With the additional revision, uh, suggested by Mrs. Mar?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor? Please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Scolari?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye. Craig McLuhan, that that motion unanimously passes. So those policy revisions have been accepted and will be implemented. Thank you all for your efforts on that. Moving on to the next item, that's just an item I have permanently on here. I, I keep on meaning to reach out to, to the town to see if there's been any additional, uh, applications for this, uh, for the school facilities committee. And, uh, and I just haven't done it. And I, I want to know if there are. And actually, Mrs. St. Orange, I'm interested in maybe even doing one of those, uh, electronic signs. I, I want to advertise this. There must be, there must be at least nine people out there in this community that are interested in this. And I just don't think I'm getting the word out to them. And, and I mean, I, I really haven't done much, um, to do it. So I, I maybe we can touch base, uh, sort of offline and, and sort of, uh, I can figure out, I can learn from you and your experiences and how to, how to sort of coordinate that.
Yeah, I can connect you to the right people.
Right.
I, I, I'd just like to make a comment there too as well. I, I'm, I'm going to sign up myself. So, um, you know.
Great. You're muted, Paul.
Yeah, Craig, I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to volunteer for that. So I'm also, um, if we could almost make a goal by getting, getting it filled by the end of the month, because I think it's important. I know we, we've been all talking about it. And I know three or four people that I could ask. So myself, I'm going to put myself on. Um, it's definitely needed. So, um, you know, it'd be a pleasure to serve with you. I know you put yourself on there, Craig. And, um, you know, I think that we can get that fulfilled by the end of the month. And I think that's a be a good goal because it's very important.
I think that'd be great. Uh, Mr. Kearney, I'm very happy to hear that because, uh, not unlike Frank Sinatra, you, you demand nothing but the best. So I think, uh, you, you'll be a zealous advocate for that as we're looking at, uh, proposed new facilities for the schools. And I think it'd be a great addition to that. So I'm, I'm.
It'd be my pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Um, so, uh, okay. Well, that's, this is why I keep that on every agenda. Cause I just want, I want, I, I just want to keep on talking about that. I don't want to let that die, that, that, that die, you know? Moving on, reports from the subcommittees, liaison positions. Let's move through it in alphabetical order. If Mrs. Scolari is ready right now, she can go first. If not, we can move her down in the batting order. You ready to go?
Nothing to report.
Oh, okay. Moving on. Mr. Kearney, do you have anything to report?
No, just a comment on, um, I'm just so grateful that, uh, where our teachers are, uh, working hard. Um, you know, we walk around my house and get all sorts of different classrooms going on. And I know it's been, um, it's been difficult, but I just want the administrations to know and, and all those hardworking teachers and custodians and bus drivers and how much we really appreciate them. And, um, you know, we look forward to getting through this and, um, we're doing the best we can. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar?
Um, thank you. Um, you know, Mr. McLuhan, I just had a thought on, you know, how, how to help populate the school facilities committee in that, um, the, the other appointed boards have been filled in town, namely capital budget advisory, and then there's some, some other ancillary boards. And you could check with Tracy Connors in the, um, town manager's office to see. um, town manager's office to see if they had applicants for boards that, and, and those applicants weren't appointed. Because obviously they have an innate uh, desire to volunteer. So that's one part of the battle. So you know, if you check with her to see if there's been any more applications, you could also check to see were the people that applied for certain things that there just wasn't room for. And we could reach out to them and see if they'd be interested. Just, just a thought.
Great suggestion. I'll do that. Thank you, Mrs. Mar.
Sure. Um, and I don't know if you want me to get into a little bit of an overview of the capital budget meeting the other night. Mrs. Owens had touched on it.
Um, it's sort of an evolving process. I don't know if, if, I, I don't know. It, it, if you feel, if you feel, yeah, that you'd be the best uh, one to determine this. If you feel that now would be a good time to do that, let's do it. If you think that after the next meeting, i- it will have more substance to share, then I, then let's do it then. Whatever you think. I, I, I don't know. I mean, I heard your update myself, obviously, but, but I, I don't know what you think.
Yeah, no, well, I'll, I'll, I'll try to give, you know, a fifty thousand foot view and, and not get into the weeds on the details. So we, we presented um, as Mr. Kearney had mentioned, two point seven million dollars worth of uh, capital items and the other night. And um, lots of good, interesting, challenging questions. And as Mrs. Owens indicated, we have homework to do. Um, our capital items fall into a couple of buckets. And they fall into facilities. And they fall into academics. And we stated, you know, it, it's a challenge for, for anyone to ask us to prioritize the classroom over an HVAC system. Or an HVAC system over the classroom. Um, and it, it's a quandary that, that we're in. I mean, we work with facilities. Nick Verratti was there and, and he, he was terrific. And um, it's, it's very, it's very hard to make that decision, but we're gonna be asked to make that decision. And I'm thinking that on some of these, so out of the two point seven million, there's nine hundred and fifty thousand for the turf and the track. And there's um, five, uh, seven hundred and forty thousand for the two HVAC systems. Um, one for the middle high school gym roof, which is a priority urgent need that, that facilities has said cannot be Band-Aid, Band-Aid it anymore. And then one for Deer Hill. And they clearly said doing them at the same time would be most advantageous for the town. And I'm just wondering if we can take those two big tickets, which in round numbers is one point seven of the two point seven million, and somehow alternatively fund them via a bond or something else, some other kind of mechanism. Um, I, I think that would take some of the pressure off capital budgets and off of us to then prioritize the remaining one million. And um, quite frankly, you know, we averaged twenty-two to twenty-five percent of capital budget expenditures in my tenure on the school committee. And I don't think it's inappropriate at this time, not knowing what else is on their plate, to ask for a little bit more. To ask for a little bit more allocation, so that we don't sacrifice the classroom for the building. Um, and so that's why it's really important for us as a group to really vet the list and go through it and, and, and talk about the things that we, you know, we really, we really need. And um, we should start having some conversations with Dawn, uh, Dawn Pye and Chris Senior about how, on these two big ticket things, how, how can we creatively work them around without sacrificing the other things that we need? Um, and usually in my experience, having those conversations offline with, with those two, we come up with some solutions. So I would like to recommend that um, for that. So that's all I wanted to talk about for capital budgets at this point.
Well, how do we, so, I mean, how do we effectuate that recommendation? Um, I think it's a good one. Um, I mean, how do we, how do we put that into action?
I, I think we call them up and we say, do you have some time? And we want to talk about these things and we want to brainstorm. We, you know, or maybe Dr. Sullivan calls Chris Senior. And we get, you know, a meeting date and it's, you know, i- it's not, it's not to, to to subvert capital budgets, but it, it's trying to take some pressure off of capital budgets. And, and we just start talking about it. And if it's next week, it's next week. And, and um, the more we talk about it and let them know our situation, the better off we'll be. And it, and that's just my opinion, my experience.
I agree with you. More communication, the better. I guess I'm, I'm specifically asking who should reach out to who and when, in your opinion. I, I, I would like to, I, I agree with it. I think it's a good, a, a, a good approach. And I, I, I would like to do it.
So I, I'd like to recommend Dr. Sullivan reach out to, to Chris Senior. And, and just say, hey, we'd like to talk about this, because we're really, y- you know, we're gonna have to be prioritizing. And we really want to brainstorm on some creative ideas. And they set up a meeting. And I'm happy to attend. Uh, Mr. McLowan, you, you know, as chair, you, you could attend. And, and just talk about it, you know, and they're creative guys. And they have, they have you know, ideas. I mean, just having a conversation got us the math curriculum out of free cash last year. So um, that's what I would suggest. So as soon as Dr. Sullivan can set up a meeting, let's.
Yeah, I will. I'm actually meeting with Chris tomorrow, so I'll be able to.
So you could branch the idea.
Bring that up. Yep.
Okay. So uh, Doc Sullivan may be planning, uh, in, including Ellen and I, excuse me, Mrs. Mar and I on that uh, you know, when you finally schedule it.
I will, I will. I'll mention it to him in person tomorrow and then I'll um, well, on, on Zoom. Everything feels like it's in person, even though you're on Zoom. Um, and then we'll uh, you know, I'll follow up with you and uh, and Ellen to make sure that the committee's in the loop.
Perfect. Thank you.
Via your communication. Craig, if I, if I could just make one comment on that. Um, I, I agree with Alan. Um, they're, 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 they're good people. We just gotta put some kind of a plan together. Um, and also, um, I also agree with the fact that we don't want to talk about science teachers and air conditioners at the same time. Uh, we do have um, one point seven for, two point seven for next year. But it's, it's like eight million for the next six years. So we might want to try to bond it all together instead of piecemealing it. Um, or um, we could have maybe a one or two year plan with the idea that we're gonna be having this school facilities committee that will be looking more long term. Um, but I really appreciate the fact that we have it out there exactly what we need. And, and again, if we can bond it or you know, not pay for it right away and, you know, get these things done and move, move it along quicker, I'm all for that. And um, I just think, again, I want to thank um, the facilities committee for all the work they've done on this. It's, it's good work.
And, and, and so, you know, Paul, to the, to the eight million, that's on the ten year capital plan.
Right.
It, it's out there and, and everyone knows it. And uh, one, two, one, five, three point five million of that is new roofs for the three buildings, which uh, we're not eligible for MSBA funding until I think it's twenty twenty-three for the first one. And so it's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, um, which is up to forty percent reimbursement, which you know, forty percent of three point five million. I actually did the math after the last AEC meeting. Forty percent of three point five million far exceeds the twenty percent, the savings over twenty years of solar panels on the roofs. So, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to give up forty percent funding of new roofs to get solar panels earlier and pay for the roofs. Because you're, you're not gonna, do you know, do you follow what I'm saying? You're not, you're not gonna make up the difference. Um, but the ten year plan, we should always be revisiting and, and adding to.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kearney. Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Mar, anything else aside from the capital update? Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Uh, Mrs. St. Orange?
Thank you. So on December twenty-first, the um, RFP evaluation had, uh, committee had our concluding meeting. Um, so Mrs. Owen and I were there. Um, and there were some interesting updates. So obviously, we voted to to move forward with negotiations. Um, and so with that vote, um, what Ms. Bodell did was move forward with negotiating with three companies um, for, for multiple reasons. Conditions could be changing. Um, the K, the most recent CARES Act. I'm not sure exactly exactly what the outcome is right now, because we have another follow-up meeting, but um, could be extending the solar credit for two years for um, solar panels. So that could change our outlook for you know, like our roof replacement timing and, and potential for solar panels could be better aligned because of an extension. Um, which is great. Um, so, so basically, a letter of intent was given to Select, which was the company that was designing the all um, roof solar panel um, system. Amoresco, which is the um, in, in, in the um, parking lots. And then Palmer was a substantially separate project in town. So it creates the possibility of these like two parallel paths, but it keeps those options open for the schools. It also creates a little bit of competition among those two companies to give the best, most desirable bid. So um, kind of nice to have that, you know, given, giving the, giving Cohasset an advantage. Um, so I am the one who will join the negotiating committee when that starts up in the, in the next few weeks of the new year. But um, I think it's just interesting to hear that, you know, of course, carports seemed like it was not a very popular um, suggestion. That kind of proposal is being developed, but also a proposal for rooftop solar is being developed. Um, because this extension could align with um, with a roof replacement in our near, in our near future, in the next couple of years. So I will keep you updated as negotiations continue or begin slash continue.
Okay. Any other updates, Mrs. St. Orange?
Uh, that was it.
I have a question for you. Um, my understanding of the way it was presented to us when we took that vote was that Amoresco had already been identified as the potential vendor, because they were offering the, the best bid or product. And there, there were no, there's no discussion of any other uh, potential uh, vendors. And also, there was discussion of a timeline that, you know, there was some sort of um, pressure being, in, in my opinion, uh, insinuated or implied um, by the end of the calendar year.
The letter of intent, the letter of intent was the by the end of the calendar year? Um, and so that has been sent by the town. Sorry, I cut you off. You can continue. So.
No, I asked, those are my two questions.
Yeah. So I think because it is um, Amoresco was being proposed as the viable option for something that could happen now with the existing roofs and the timeline that was understood um, kind of at that point. And then this potential of the CARES Act extension of solar made it possible to I think pursue these various paths with conversations with schools and then also with the Select Board. Um, and so I I don't know. I may not be expressing it clearly enough, but it's just my understanding that the letter of intent was, the deadline was the end of twenty twenty. The companies are, you know, big enough and have enough projects that they're, they understand that the projects may not follow through, but they're willing to take the risk, because even if they make designs, they could move forward with other people kind of in line behind us. Does that make sense? Um,
Sure.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to put you in a difficult spot. I just, I, I just know you have more information than me. And, you know, I, I'm not trying to drill you. I just, as you know, I was not a proponent.
I do know. Yeah.
And uh, I just, it, it, it seems different than the information that was presented. So.
I think that there was a shift because of, I think because of the possibility of this extension of solar credit. And so it became kind of more fathomable that a roof project, a roof replacement might actually align with the, with a solar panel project. Um, and I think it was, you know, picked up that members of this committee were bigger fans of solar panels than carports. So um, yeah, I guess that the vote was a letter of intent to bidders to say we can move ahead with negotiations. And so negotiations are being explored, I guess, more broadly than just carports, just to have the potential to do um, a project that might, that might work out for the schools. So as I get more information, I will share it.
Sure.
Kind of what I understand right now.
That's fine. I just, I was curious. Thank, thank.
Can I make a comment? Yeah, I, I, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing. And I'm so grateful that you do understand, like, because I was asked to vote on it. And I felt like I didn't really know enough information on it, other than um, I just want to be on record that it doesn't make any sense for the carports. So I wouldn't be um, I, I, I don't want to be closed minded to that, but it just makes no sense to put the carports up and leave the roofs the way they are. And uh, and I know you know, um, by knowing this committee and, and knowing the feel of the committee. And I, I just want to say, I really appreciate that. And then, and knowing that, um, just wanted to be on record that I'm just not a big fan of those carports. And uh, you know, if, and especially the fact that we would be fined if we would uh, um, you know, not want them anymore. So, you, you know, unless they're like, you know, space age unbelievable, like, you know, uh, uh, you can just put me down for a no for the carports.
Yeah, no, I under, I understand.
Okay.
Um, and I think that um, Ms. Bodell is very clever in the business of understanding these solar incentives and was able to kind of look at multiple options and hopefully position us for potentially having rooftop solar. I mean, if that timeline works out, that would be awesome. If we could get a new roof and put solar panels on, how great would that be?
Awesome. Save money and, yeah.
Yeah, and kind of out of sight, out of mind and saving money.
Yeah.
Who could ask for anything more?
I'm glad we're agreeing on that. I, I appreciate that.
Yeah. So I'll keep you updated. Negotiation, the negotiation, ew, can't even talk anymore. The negotiation committee, I think, will, you know, start meeting. Um, I'm sure soon. I think now that we're in the new year, we're all just kind of resetting and, and figuring out how to move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Um, I have no updates. So moving on to the next agenda item, it's uh, approval of minutes. I don't believe there were any minutes to approve. So uh, the next agenda item is uh, topics not recently anticipated by the chairperson forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. There is one item in that agenda um, section. That is the um, consideration of a fifty dollar gift by Looters, if I'm saying that right. Looters, Looters, um, an environmental uh, company that has made a gift to the schools um, in appreciation of the uh, seemingly the, the business they've had in Cohasset in the community. So um, Dr. Sullivan, if you want to present that, or Ms. Owen, whoever's doing that?
Uh, yes, I can present that. Um, I was actually struggling a little bit to find the actual check, but it is from Looters, who's a local company. Um, there you are. And it is um, it, it, it is in, in recognition of what they uh, are appreciative of in our schools uh, to be used as we see fit um, to, you know, to help the students. So I'm, as we do with all gifts, you know, it gets cleared through the school committee. Um, very much appreciate uh, this company's gracious and um, very um, generous uh, giving to us. And we put it up for a vote for acceptance from the committee.
There are motion to accept the, the gift at this time.
So moved. Sorry.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Caleri. Mrs. Caleri?
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McLowan. That gift is unanimously accepted. Dr. Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you.
Next uh, agenda item is executive session. There's no reason to move into executive session at this time that I know of. Okay, moving on to uh, to a, a fan favorite agenda item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved and happy new year, everyone.
Moved. Motion made by.
Happy new year to everyone.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Kearney is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Caleri. All in favor? Mrs. Caleri?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McLowan. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much for your time. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Everyone.